City Council meeting. I'd like to ask all councilors and guests to please rise. I'm going to introduce Council Baker, who will introduce our faith leader. It's one of those days. Okay, let's start with roll call, just to make sure we have quorum before we begin. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Council Baker.
Yeah.
Council Campbell. Council Siomo. Council Sabby George. Council Flaherty. Council Jackson. Council Lamatina. Council Linehan. Council McCarthy. Council O'Malley. Council Presley. Council Wu.
President.
And Council Zachem. And President.
Thank you. And again, now, I'm going to introduce Council Baker, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Council Baker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Council Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everybody. Today, we welcome Father Patrick Fiorillo. Father Patrick is the Assistant Priest at St. Anne's and St. Brendan's Parishes in Dorchester. He arrived there this past June after being ordained the priesthood in May for the Archdiocese of Boston, so he's brand-new. Go easy on him. Prior to entering the seminary, he attended the Hart School of Music in Hofford, Connecticut, which he is in a band, he's a drummer, I believe, and worked as a music recording engineer. He grew up in Franklin, Mass. with his two brothers, Christopher and Timothy, and is now thrilled to be living in Dorchester, serving the city of Boston. Quick story about Father Patrick. The first time I met him, we were at a Christmas concert at one of my senior houses, and he got up to address the crowd, and he said to them, now, we had just celebrated a 100-year birthday, like, two months before that, he got up and said to the crowd, "When I was a young man..." Huge laughter broke up. So, please help me welcome Father Patrick to Boston. Thank you, Father.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the countless gifts and blessings you have bestowed upon all of us gathered here. Just as you have chosen to raise up countless leaders in the city of Boston for many generations past, your divine providence has placed us together here, calling leaders in our own day to serve the common good of all. We pray that we would be faithful to that calling, promoting peace and justice, guaranteeing the dignity of all, and helping our fellow residents to flourish and to thrive. Bless the city of Boston, and in a particular way, the mayor, the members of the city council, all our elected leaders, and all those who work for them. Grant them wisdom to guide their decisions, courage to face all challenges, and hope for the future, and make them to be models of charity toward one another, so that they may work together in carrying on the great traditions of this city on the hill. We ask for the guidance and intercession of Boston's patron, Saint Patolph, for whom the city is named. We make this prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the
Thank you very much, Council Baker and Father Fiorillo. We'll start with the approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved, and we'll move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0283 all the way through docket 0289 together,
Docket number 0283, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Norris Welsh as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1st, 2019. Docket number 0284, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Marie Paducah -- no, Paduda as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1st, 2019. Docket number 0285, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Catherine Neoforos as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1st, 2019. Docket number 0286, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of An Nguyen as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1st, 2019. Docket number 0287, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Anna Gigi as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1st, 2019. Docket number 0288, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Leslie St. Germain as the Secretary of the Boston Licensing Board for a term expiring June 7th, 2020. Docket number 0289, notice as you see from the police commissioner in accordance with Section 3 of the Boston Trust Act regarding civil immigration detainee results for calendar year 2016.
Thank you. Dockets number 0283 through 0289 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0130, order for hearing regarding re-precincting in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, if Council McCarthy wanted to give an update on the re-precincting hearing?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. We did have a re-precincting hearing the other day. It was very informative regarding a lot of our oversized precincts and the matching up. Especially want to thank former Council Larry DiCaro for stopping by. Larry gave us a long lesson on how all the precincts were made. I hope he's watching, because I'm sure he's chuckling. And a lot of these precincts are in Council Linehan's district, so we'll continue to have some working sessions to make sure. We put that forward, and Commissioner Irish was here as well, and he's going to continue on their planning, and they hope to have something ready by June, but possibly in the fall elections, we'll have some changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Docket number 0130 will remain in the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0290, Council Linehan and Campbell offer the following order for hearing regarding the Boston Police Cadet Program.
Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, the cadet program was budgeted for the last fiscal year, and I guess they used those dollars for administrative purposes, but put it in place where a class was entered in October. So they had a selection process through the spring and summer of last year, and we're just looking for an update on how it's going at this point, who was selected, and I mean a demographic breakdown of the select -- as part of the selection process, and to see if it's going well, like, you know, should we be advocating for more? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Council Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Linehan for the partnership, but also for his advocacy even before I got here, for the cadet program to come back. And based on conversations with the Commissioner and BPD, it is going well, and so I'm looking forward to a hearing to update the public and this body publicly about the demographics of that class, how much of them are people of color, young folks of color from across the city. Just at the Pats celebration yesterday, I ran into one of the cadets who was on duty, which was really exciting. This is a young black woman from the city of Boston, who I think has wanted to be a police officer all her life. I think it's also an opportune time, now that we are -- folks are pushing for us to think about doing a cadet program for the fire department. Council Linehan and I look forward to also, at some point, having a conversation about the possibility and feasibility of that as well. So thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Council Linehan.
Thank you, Council Campbell. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the makers, and again, I join Council Campbell in saluting Council Linehan for his leadership in advocating for the restoration of the cadet program, recognizing that we have an aging force, we need more officers, we need younger officers, and that we need to have a force that is representative in neighborhood, gender, and in race. So I look forward to the report back, and I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Council Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Council Presley's name. Please add Council Zachem, Council O'Malley, Council McCarthy, Council Lamatina, Council Jackson, Council Flaherty, Council Sabby George, Council Siomo, Council Baker, and please add the chair's name. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Docket number 0290 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0291, Council Jackson offered the following order for hearing to create an immigrant defense fund.
Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to be free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. It's New Colossus, and it is a plaque that is on the Statue of Liberty. We are a city and a nation of immigrants, and today I'm introducing a conversation for us to create a legal defense fund for Boston immigrants, documented and undocumented. An interesting statistic is that in the Boston Immigration Court, between February 1st, 2010, and January 31st, 2015, only 4% of the cases -- only 4% of these were cases in which a person without a lawyer was able to win their case. There was 23,731 cases. And with a lawyer, that number went up to -- the number went up to 49% of all the cases in that five-year period. We are a nation and a city and a state of laws, and it is critical that people get due process. Cities across the United States have created immigrant defense funds, including Chicago, DC, LA, San Francisco, and Oakland, and they are all public-private partnerships. Massachusetts has roughly 190,000 undocumented immigrants. And then, the data was difficult to find, but we found an interesting statistic that although the number of undocumented workers in Boston is unknown, the Irish lobby for immigration reform estimates that at least 10,000 undocumented Irish workers are in the city of Boston. The Immigrant Legal Defense Fund is vital to the economy of the city of Boston. Foreign students make up a huge economic benefit to Boston and its colleges, and at Northeastern alone, there are 7,000 international students. At Boston University, there is 5,000 international students. And if you multiply 12,000 by 55,000, which is the average amount that they pay to go to school, that actually makes up $660 million in economic benefit to the city of Boston. Our legal industry -- I'm sorry, our medical industry leads the world, and immigrant scientists and doctors are a vital part of our economy, and travel and tourism, as we know, are vital parts of our economy. Again, I'd like to credit this body and Council Josh Zachem, and as well as the mayor, for the passage and signing of the 2014 Trust Act. And we must protect the residents in the city of Boston, and that act actually does a really great job in doing that. So I put this forward to think about the time that we're in, and to ensure that we do the right thing, what's socially just and right, but also we do the right thing for our economy here in the city of Boston. We benefit greatly from immigrants in the city of Boston, foreign students, as well as those undocumented workers who go to work every single day, and it is critical that we have the ability to actually take care of them. This would actually be put forward in the new language that you have, has it put forward as a pilot program, as a public-private partnership, and I look forward to expediting a hearing so we are proactive rather than reactive on these matters. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. So as Council Jackson mentioned, there's a revised version that he gave to us before the meeting, and he is moving for substitution of the new language to clarify that it's a pilot program. All in favor of acting on the substituted language, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the revised version is now before the council. Would anyone like to speak on this? Council Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council Jackson, for bringing this forward. I appreciate the substituted language that we've just seen. I think it's very important that while, you know, through the actions of this body and people who work in this building, including Mayor Walsh, have spoken really with one voice in protecting everyone in the city of Boston, like anything else, I think we need to be cautious about new expenses for the city, and so looking at this as a pilot program, and I would just like to add with the caveat that we should be pursuing outside funding. I know quite a few of the colleges and universities, medical centers that Council Jackson mentioned for some of their employees and students, have been doing this work on their own, using their in-house attorneys, and I think that's something that would really want to pursue in this hearing, and looking at some of our nonprofit institutions. I know the Boston Foundation has made some recent emergency grants around immigration issues. So with that said, I would say I would like to sign on, and just saying, I want to make sure that we are pursuing private funding and partnerships for this, because I think we, as we're getting into budget season, Council Siomo is looking at me right now with the Ways and Means Committee, we need to be very careful with how we steward the city's fiscal responsibilities, but I think it's another important way for us to talk about protecting everyone in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zachem. Madam Clerk, could you please add Council Zachem's name to the order? And please add Council Presley, Council Lamatina, Council Sabby George, Council Siomo. Please add the chair's name. Council Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise just to commend the maker. I think it's an original and creative idea. I hadn't heard about other municipalities across the country doing something similar. I want to echo Council Zachem's points, which is, I would love to see this be funded privately. I think we have, in addition to universities and companies that fund this work, we have an incredible array of law firms in the city of Boston. And law firms, some of us have worked at them, we're always looking for ways in which to partner with the city of Boston, to be proactive and to support the work that we do here every single day. So I would encourage us to also invite law firm heads or pro bono chairs of these firms to that hearing as a possibility. And I also want to echo, or sort of add, that we often hear, at least in my office, from folks who are dealing not only with immigration issues, but issues related to discrimination generally, and how difficult it is to find an attorney. And sometimes when we hear these cases, you do feel as though they've been wronged in some way, but yet we don't necessarily have the power to assist them. We may recommend that they contact the AG's office, the bar associations, but even then, it's extremely difficult for someone to get a free legal representation in the city of Boston. So I would love for us to also discuss the possibility of expanding this to include discrimination as a whole and other claims that our residents deal with every single day. Well, thank you, Council Jackson, for your efforts on this, and thank you for the hearing order. Thank you, Madam President. I'd love to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Campbell. Madam Clerk, please add Council Campbell's name. Please add Council O'Malley's name as well. Docket number 0291 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0292, Council Wu offered the following order to create a special committee on civil rights.
So I am putting before you all a proposed rule change to amend our committee structure partway through the term. As we had reorganized earlier last year, the goal was to make sure that we were really focusing our resources and streamlining the committee so that each person had one standing committee based on what they were most interested in and wanted to focus their time on. And with the creation of new committees on homelessness, mental health and recovery, on jobs, wages, and workforce development, on committees that include transportation, I thought it was important to make sure that civil rights was part of every committee, but, again, have us focus. Now, the world has changed a little bit in the last two weeks, and I want to thank Council Zachem for approaching me about reinstating the Civil Rights Committee, given our constituents' reaction to the executive orders coming down from DC, and this general sense of fear and anxiety in the community about what may come next. It is our job to be completely responsive to the needs of the community and what their concerns are. So Council Zachem and I have discussed proactive approach to this committee, where, yes, it would take on issues that are referred to it, but in addition, we would also -- I would also late -- should the committee be established later today, I would late-file a policy briefing series so that the committee will proactively begin to convene discussions as well, just like our series on transportation and on early education and childcare. So this vote will require a 2/3 majority, because it is a rules change partway through the term, so we'll do a roll call vote at the end, but welcome anyone who's interested to speak on it now. Council Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your partnership on drafting this new committee description and putting it together. I echo your earlier comments that, over the past months, weeks, days, as I'm out and talking to my constituents, talking to others around the city, around the region, that I said, what's going on in the Civil Rights Committee and the Boston City Council? How are you guys working to address some of the issues that we've seen such an outpouring of support through these rallies in Copley Square, in the Boston Common, the Women's March, there was one in Somerville this weekend, and really around the area and around our neighborhoods? I said, you know, we all are committed, we've -- it's been one of the most encouraging things for me, being on this body, is that any time an issue of civil rights or human rights comes up, this body has voted unanimously, I think, on the right side of history. But I think it's incredibly important that we have a forum, both for, as the council president said, pertinent hearing orders coming up, but also to have a place where we can help organize. And I think something that is so important about our job here is getting the right people together in the right room, in the same room, to talk about this thing. We have city agencies in our offices, in the mayor's side of the building, or nonprofit organizations that are organizing many of these rallies, or people who are out there on the front lines, we just talked about, our immigration, our immigrant community and some of the issues they're dealing with, be able to talk together and say how we can work together towards the same goal of making sure that Boston is an inclusive, welcoming place, where we're going to protect all our residents and visitors. So I certainly would ask for your support in establishing this special committee. I would ask for your support in helping us bring important issues, both to the policy briefing series, important individuals that you know in your communities and in your networks, who have something to add to this conversation, that we can do in a more formal manner and make sure that all voices are heard, and that we're thoughtful about this, and that we hear different perspectives. So I'm really looking forward to this work, and I want to again thank Council President for her partnership on this, and hopefully look forward to establishing this special committee and getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zachem. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend Council Zachem and Council Wu for your leadership in this space, and wish to have my name added, and look forward to voting in the affirmative, and just, you know, would add that really appreciate the underscoring of the need, not only for this to be -- this committee to be reinstated, but also that the work is across agency. The work of civil rights protections is not something that should be siloed or marginalized, or, you know, it should not be siloed or marginalized, it needs to be addressed across agency. And I think right now, with the threats that are daily sort of bearing down on us, it's very easy to focus only on the threats to civil rights that are loud and screaming, but there are threats in ways in which our civil rights are eroded and compromised that are whispers. And so this series of policy briefings will enable us to engage community in that way so that we can be better enlightened about those threats to our civil rights and those experiences that people are having daily, that may not be on a big stage, and may not be as loud, but are no less noteworthy of our attention, of our focus, and of our energies. And so, again, I thank you both for your leadership, and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Campbell, had you signaled? You have the floor.
Occasionally this works, and occasionally it doesn't. So I just wanted to rise and thank you, President Wu, for your leadership on this, and thank you, Council Zachem, for taking the lead. It's not easy chairing more than one committee. I will say, I'm honored to join you as a vice chair of this committee. I think it's an incredible time to come together and have these conversations, which are often happening in community across the city of Boston with various stakeholders, whether it know-your-rights panels or different things, which we can actually do from the city landscape, around a myriad of issues. So this is really exciting. Thank you for your leadership. I hope everyone will, of course, vote in affirmative on this, but the President will thank you also for your leadership on bringing this back.
Thank you, Council Campbell. Madam Clerk, could you please add Council Flaherty's name? Please add Council Siomo, Council Sabby George, Council Jackson, Council Lamatina, Council Linehan, Council McCarthy, Council O'Malley, Council Baker. And apologies, the previous speakers, did you wish to have your name added as well? Please add Council Zachem, Council Presley, and Council Campbell. So at this time, Chair moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0292. We will take a roll call vote to see if we hit the 2/3.
Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu. Yes. Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0292 received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0292 has been passed unanimously.
Docket number 0293, Council Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools' student assignment process.
Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is a refile, and I think it's critical that we think about student assignment as a whole. This was changed in school year 2013, 2014, changing from the old three-zone system to a home-based system. I want to acknowledge my vice chair, Council Sabby George, for pointing out several times the Perry School, which half of their assignment area is in the water. And so the assignment system doesn't work there, and their kindergarten actually oftentimes does not -- is not full based on how the assignment system is occurring. The Matter Hunt School, when you look at the walk zone for the Matter Hunt School, it's -- most of their walk zone is next to a cemetery. And so part of the system is problematic with specific schools. In addition, the Boston Public Schools is, based on the letter of recommendation to the External Advisory Committee when this was decided, should be reporting to the city council every year on or before October 1st. That has not happened. So it is critical that we look at these issues now, and look at what changes in equitable access to quality seats for all students, as well as changes to school academic performance and overall equity. As we still await a plan from the Boston Public Schools, that's a full presentation of their facilities plan, it is critical that we look at these issues around school assignment, equitable access, and then also how that plays into the plan that we continue to wait for. And so I look forward to a hearing on this, and to be able to see where we're at, and then determine where we should be going relative to school assignment.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Sabby George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair of Education and Maker of this order regarding the student assignment process, and I urge the chairman to move quickly on this hearing as we are in the midst of the BPS enrollment period. A few points that I'd like to note. The student assignment process is the most enormously stressful period of time for families in the city of Boston. The assignment of your child to any particular school in the city really can, at least in perspective or feeling, set your child up for success or failure, so it's incredibly important that we take this seriously. Too many of our school decisions are based on enrollment data and enrollment information, and because this system has significant flaws, and is, quite frankly, broken, too many of those those decisions, whether schools will stay open, will remain open, will be successful, will not be successful, will have appropriate levels of funding, are based on that enrollment data. The system is broken, it needs to be fixed, we need to call BPS to the table and hold them accountable for that broken system. I think that it's incredibly important when the district speaks that it talks about putting kids and families first. We have not done that. We need to do that, it's so incredibly important. Questions I'd ask at this hearing, many of you know the tempo of my questions, but how many families in the city get their first, second, or third choice? How many kids are administratively assigned? Meaning, they don't get a choice, or they don't get one of their choices, or they haven't, they haven't, for some reason, gotten to the table to make a choice, so they've been administratively assigned? I believe that number is incredibly high. If your child is at a school that you don't want your child to go to, your commitment to that school is, will typically be low. The process is unclear, the process is unpredictable, the process is frustrating, incredibly, incredibly frustrating. And when we talk about, you know, the close of this hearing order, along with other interested parties, other interested parties, we need to know that our kids and our families are put first during this process, that their voice is heard when we talk about schools. And there are too many occasions that I feel that Boston Public Schools is not listening to families who are speaking for their kids. And one thing that I'd also like to have as part of this conversation is the role of transportation and enrollment. We need to know that what drives education is not the buses, what drives education is the academic need for our kids, and that has to be the priority, has to be first. And I would say, both as part of what we hear in my office, what I hear at community meetings, what I hear across the city, is that the process of assignment and enrollment is what's breaking our back and what's really hurting our families across the city. And I'd add that the BTU school is also surrounded by cemeteries and has a very similar problem. Too much of what we count, too much of what we count doesn't matter, and what should matter are kids and our family. Thank you to the Chairman of Education, and thank you for that. Yes, I'd like to sign on, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabby George. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Sabby George's name. Please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem. Please add the chair's name. Please add Counselor Presley. Docket number 0293 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0294, Counselor Wu for Counselor Linehan.
Counselor Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0294. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0294 has been passed.
Docket number 0295, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension and passage of docket 0295. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0295 has been passed.
Docket number 0296, Counselor Wu for Counselor Linehan.
Counselor Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0296. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, docket 0296 has been passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which is what I mentioned earlier around the special, the new special committee, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing none, the matter is added. Madam Clerk, could you please read the late-file matter?
In the year 2017, order of City Council President Michelle Wu, Civil Rights Policy Briefing Series. Be it ordered that Boston City Council's Special Committee on Civil Rights will host a series of policy briefings related to key topics in civil rights policy. The briefings shall feature presentations and discussion with policy experts, which will be open to the public and broadcast live where possible. City councilors, representatives from city departments, stakeholders, and other interested parties shall be invited to attend, filed on February 8th, 2017.
Thank you. The first late-file matter shall be assigned to the new Special Committee on Civil Rights. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Seeing none, we will ratify the consent agenda with one late-file addition. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. And now, all counselors and guests, oh, sorry, we have a few statements. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Sorry. I have unanimous consent to make a very brief statement. I just wanted to, first of all, just thank everyone for supporting the creation of the new Special Committee on Civil Rights. And somewhat in that vein, myself and a coalition of organizations are organizing a rally this Sunday at 11:00 a.m. at the Holocaust Memorial, just across the street from here, in support of refugees and immigrants. Some of the organizations involved are the Islamic Society of Boston Cultural Center, the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Boston, the Anti-Defamation League. There's a Facebook event that some of you may have gotten, we're Facebook friends. I also wasn't, wasn't able to get it to everyone, but I just wanted to invite everyone here and help spread the word. I certainly don't expect it to be as largely attended as some of the prior rallies we've had around the city, but we're certainly hoping to get a few hundred people out there. It's a national day of action from Holocaust survivors and others around the country, and we really thought it was important to make this a multi-faith, multicultural action here in Boston. So, it's really excited about this, and if folks can attend or help spread the word, that'd be great. I mean, I know certainly everyone here is supportive of this, as we've shown through our actions these past months and years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Anyone else have an announcement? Oh, good. Okay, then at this time, if all counselors and guests could please rise. And today we adjourn our council meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Joe Carson. For Counselor Lamatina, Christine Tar, John Quono, Helen H. Bong, Eileen J. Coppola, Richard A. Ritchie Brolt Sr., and Jeanette Festa. For Counselor Linehan, Mary Marie Morris. And for Counselor O'Malley, Thomas A. Brady. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, February 15th, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.